Corporate action. Opening of the meeting, we'll call to order invocation by Dr. Dennis Eard, District 6, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag by Mr. Al Orchard, District 13. Heavenly Father, as we gather together tonight, we ask that you bless our endeavors, guide our discussions, and enlighten our minds to align with your will. We ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. May the decisions we make reflect the beauty of your kingdom, and may we always be a shining example of your goodness and truth. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with the name of God, indivisible, and indelible.
Roll call. Babbitt, Ms. Bell.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Fertitta.
Here.
Mr. Bootery.
Yeah.
Dr. Ghiatt.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Mr. Dufrin.
Mr. Schwes.
Here.
Mr. Plazoff.
Here.
Mr. DePlantis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Ms. Chauvin.
Here.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Archer to review the Policy on Public Participation Board.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. It is the policy of the LPS Parish School Board to conduct all meetings in full view of and with welcome participation by the public. A public comment period shall be held before any vote is taken on a motion made in reference to an agenda item or before the next agenda item is introduced for non-action items. Members of the public who wish to speak on agenda items at a board slash committee meeting may do so by: A) Completing a public comment card and submitting it to the official recorder prior to any action being taken on the agenda item or before the next agenda item is introduced for non-action items. Speakers shall be recognized in the order in which or submitted following the initial discussion by the board. Members of the public may also choose to express support or opposition without wishing to speak through the public comment card. Item B: When an individual has been recognized to speak on an agenda item, that individual shall limit his/her comments to matters that are strictly relevant to that agenda item. President reserve the right to stop any comments when necessary. Item C: There should be a five-minute, and for instance, ten minutes, for committee meetings time limit imposed on any speaker or group. D: Any member of the public wishing to speak who has not submitted a public comment card will be offered the opportunity to speak before a vote is taken. If the agenda item does not require a vote, i.e. non-action items, members of the public wishing to speak shall be allowed to do so by the presiding officer conducting the meeting prior to moving to the next agenda item during a final call for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak then should stand and walk to the front of the board. Once recognized, members of the public shall state their name, address, and then proceed to their public comment. For more information regarding public participation at the LPS Parish School Board and committee meeting, please view Review LPSB Policies BC, BI, and BBC available online. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Item 3: Policy and Procedure. Do you consider approving the revisions to Policy JCD (Student Conduct), JCDAB (Student Alcohol and Drug Use), JCDAC (Dangerous Weapons), JS (Discipline), JDD (Suspension), JDE (Expulsion)? Can I get a motion? Ms. Boujwa and Mr. Bernard. Mr. Phelps.
Vice President Ghiatt, Superintendent Martin, and members of the board, Act 473 of the Regular Session, 2021 Louisiana Legislature Session, made changes to RS 17416, which governs disciplinary measures for school boards, thereby making it necessary to revise several of our discipline policies. As the changes are too numerous to list, I'll summarize the major changes to the discipline policies impacted by Act 473. Before I begin, I would like to pull Policy JCDAB until next meeting due to policy errors that will be worked out between Ms. Masterson, our attorney, and our office, and I would like to present those at the next meeting.
Okay, so at this time, we'll entertain a motion to postpone JCDAB (Student Alcohol and Drug Use) until a later date. Mr. Bernard and Ms. Chauvin. Any public comment?
State legislature, or our representative come before y'all and explain to y'all the changes and what was going to take place?
No, sir. Excuse me.
Stephen Wilson.
Okay.
Thirty-two, forty-one, Howie Drew, Racine, Louisiana.
All right, and so your point is specific to the policies that we're revising? Your question?
Yeah, the revisions.
Okay.
Did you have input of the revisions that the state made? So if I was understanding what he said, the state made some changes in one of their sessions, and that you have to adopt those changes. Am I correct in my assumption?
So I can address you.
Okay.
So do you have a specific policy that you're referring to?
Not at all. I just want to be sure that you are aware of what the changes are being made before you vote on.
Well, sir, with all due respect, everything that we listed is a discipline-type policy that's dictated by changes, whether it's within the legislature or not, that we're dictated to make changes and address.
Oh, in other words, whatever they're telling you to do, you have to do because you're dictated to do that.
That is completely correct.
Okay, and whether or not you took the initiative, put any input, or to review the changes that they made, was that done? You as a body?
Mr. Phelps, I will let you address them if you would like, to be clear.
Right, so typically what happens is after the legislative session, we get our policy revisions from a company called Forethought, and they give us the policies, and we send those to our board attorneys for review. Then our board attorney sends them to us, and then we summarize them and present them to the board for approval.
Mr. Bernard.
That's what we're here for. We're going to listen to what he feels the revisions should be. If we don't like it, and there's that particular point, we won't accept it, and they won't be changing the policy.
That's contradictory to what he just said. He said that you had to.
Well, so you got to understand, the way this functions, he reviews them.
Let's back up. Well, if we can, excuse my ignorance, is that someone proposed these changes at the state level on the soon.
The changes are law.
Right.
And it was changes that are law or reviewed by Forethought Consulting.
Right.
They review all the policies, and those policies are presented to us and our board attorneys, and we review those policies, and we make sure that the law, how it applies to our policies, are accurate. And then we come to the board meeting, we present them to our board members for approval or not.
But what I'm saying is that this, was this body, I'm sure it was, was this body given an opportunity, or did they take that opportunity to see what those changes were prior to them being become law?
Mr. Archer.
Yes, Mr. Vice President, and sir, the way we normally do this is with a blue card, all that first is staying within the items, and then first look it up and make the presentation and seated, and more or less the meeting carry on. So they're here to state their concern, not as a debate, towards he presents his information and he's seated, and then you would carry on.
Yes, sir.
So we wanted to make sure we keep the meeting in that perspective.
Not a problem at all.
Make your presentation.
I have a blue card.
Yes, sir, what I'm saying.
That's right.
Go ahead, I just wanted to make sure we.
So just, you don't have, you say "all" on your blue card.
Yeah, I'm going to address every issue that I think I need to address. Hey, I just got this yesterday, I didn't have a chance to review anything.
So this is the thing, so excuse me, sir, so this is the thing. If you have a specific agenda item you want to speak on, you can do that. You do not have a specific agenda item detailed on this card.
Okay, well.
So you are welcome to fill out another one.
Every agenda item that's on here.
You are welcome to fill out another one to upcoming agenda items specifically.
All right, that won't be a problem.
All right, we're going to go on with the meeting. Ms. Fertitta.
I just want to make a comment that we do receive these prior to the meeting, and we review them at home whenever you look at your emails, and so we do review every agenda item.
But I think you're missing the point.
Well, I know you're telling us that the legislature is making me think, a lot of them, you know, they're rulings that come from the federal government, and it's all about the welfare of the students.
According to the state and the federal government, but not necessarily local government.
Well, if we wouldn't put it into place, then I think we would be doing that.
Thanks for your time.
And Mr. Vice President, if I may, and sir, I want to conduct the meeting in a professional fashion, keep it according to what the agenda says.
So right now, we presently have a first and second to postpone the item again, JCDAB (Student Alcohol and Drug Use) policy. We took comments from the public of any board discussion. Since none, we will go ahead and vote. Just a hand vote. Hand vote, all in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed? Any extension? All right, Mr. Phelps, you may carry on.
Yeah, I'll begin with Policy JCD (Student Conduct). The Student Conduct Policy under the section entitled Code of Conduct reflects statutory revisions by Act 473 of 2021. One of the revisions now requires the school board's Code of Conduct to include progressive levels of minor to major infractions and identify corresponding minor to major interventions and consequences. Another revision requires the Code of Conduct to serve expulsions for the major type of infractions involving weapons or drugs or when the safety of the students and staff has been put in jeopardy, because the Code of Conduct is also required to include the appeals process. Policy JD, which is Student Discipline, this discipline policy now stresses that the school board shall endeavor to address student behavior with focus on evidence-based interventions and support, and to prioritize interventions in the class and school in lieu of other school disciplinary measures. Act 473 also added to the policy a list of possible disciplinary actions by a school employee. The vision student policy section entitled Student Removal from Class reduces the list of behaviors warranting removal to preventing orderly instruction of other students holding an immediate threat to safety of students or teachers or violating the student code of conduct. Previously, a student in kindergarten to grade six, once removed from class, was not allowed to return to class for thirty minutes. Act 473 reduces the upper limit to grade five. Likewise, the subsequent language changed to grade six through twelve. Who are not returned to class during the same class period, it also expands on the counseling session that the principal or designee is to conduct with the removed student by giving the student inform of due process. The list of discipline measures for which a principal must implement at least one before a student may be readmitted to class once removed has been revised and expanded to include additional measures of Act 473. In addition to other changes, conferences with parents can be done in person, by telephone, or other virtual means. Upon the third removal of a student from the same classroom, teachers may but are no longer required to have a conference with parents or legal guardians before the student is readmitted to class. Policy JDD (Student Suspension), the suspension policy now allows notice of a suspension to parents or legal guardians by electronic communication. Also new to the suspension policy is language regarding suspension for damage to property, which previously only included property owned by or contracted to the school system. But now it's been expanded to include property owned by a school employee or student. The student may not be readmitted until payment in full has been made for the damage, an alternative restitution plan has been executed, an alternative payment plan has been arranged, or until directed by the superintendent. Another policy revision by Act 473 now gives the parent or legal guardian of a student who has been recommended for expulsion, whose consequence was reduced to a suspension, instead the right to appeal to the school board and to the district court instead of only to the superintendent. In regards to mandatory suspension for possession of a knife, the length for a knife blade has been extended by a half inch to two and one-half inches by Act 473, which is the same for regular ed and special ed students now. Students suspended for ten days or fewer are now allowed by Act 473 to receive the same credit originally available for search work, as opposed to partial or full credit. Next policy is JDE, that's Student Expulsion. Expulsion policy now requires the same notification process for expulsion as for suspension and assignment to an alternative placement. Expulsion policy includes new language reflecting advising the student of the accused misconduct and notification of the parent or legal guardian setting a time and place or conference with the principal or his designee. If the parent or legal guardian fails to attend the conference within five school days from notification, the truancy laws shall be effective. Expulsion policy revised by Act 8473 now requires that a hearing shall be conducted by the superintendent or his or her designee within fifteen days of the recommendation for expulsion by the principal. The school board must provide written notice of the hearing to the student and his or her parents or legal guardian, and the notice shall advise the student and his or her parent or legal guardian of their rights. Until the hearing, the student shall remain suspended with access to classwork and the opportunity to earn academic credit. Student expelled for longer than ten days shall receive academic instruction at an alternative setting. Additional changes to the expulsion policy are as follows. The provisions related to mandatory recommendation for expulsion shall not be applied to virtual instruction received by a student from their home. Mandatory expulsion recommendation for any student in possession of a knife with a blade which equals or exceeds two inches and has been extended by a half, has been extended by a half inch to two and a half inches. Additional qualifications have been added addressing the length of time expulsion for a student who has committed a felony or has been convicted of acts which would have constituted a felony if committed by an adult. And Policy JCDAC, which is the Dangerous Weapon Policy, this policy simply adds the new statutory definition of firearms, and that concludes our presentation. Policy revisions to these policies have been reviewed by our board attorney and are in order. I recommend they are approved or adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Any public discussion? Any board discussion? Mr. Bootery.
Gary, I spent better part of the morning reading over all of this, being a new board member and not a professional educator, and it's, it is, I think, very good in my limited opinion of this. I did have a question about the last thing you said, and I discussed it with the superintendent, the definition of a firearm, where it, and it specifically states an assault rifle. I don't think anybody knows what an assault rifle is. There truly is no such thing, and that's a term that's been made up by the media. AR stands for Armalite Rifle, which was the company that manufactured an AR, the M-15. More properly, the term would be an AR-style rifle, if I were writing it. I don't know if that language is in the statute, or if we have the ability to change that language or not, because I did not check the statute, but I just wanted to point that out.
No, just a point. I know that our state child welfare and attendance people worked extensively on this policy in the last couple of years. Mr. Phelps, in fact, is the president of that organization at this time, and any policy changes that they made were presented to the legislature for their approval. So you can rest assured that our child welfare and attendance throughout the state worked very hard on these changes and have approved it. Forethought has approved it, correct? And it is all part of our student code of conduct. We can at any point increase anything we might want. I'm saying as far as minutes are concerned, I don't want to do any of that, but I would think that everything that you have said today has been extensively reviewed by all of you, state board.
And look, I would be remiss if I wouldn't mention Mr. Posquaw, because as you guys know, he has kept us up to date since the legislative session opened in March with updates. He's updated every component from personnel to child welfare and attendance. Everywhere law apply, Mr. Posquaw has updated us with what was going on in Baton Rouge. And so, Mr. Posquaw, if you're watching, thanks a lot. He's still reaching out and doing what he can to assist us and keep us headed in the right direction, and like you say, in child welfare, state of course.
All right, any other board discussion? All right, since none, we'll go ahead and vote. All right, it should be all on. I'm seeing that you still have JCDAB in this motion. Is that correct? Okay, just want to make sure that it was. Item B: Do you consider approving revisions to Policy JCDV (Student Dress Code)? Mr. Martin. I'm sorry, excuse me. I'll entertain a motion at this point. Mr. Archer, Mr. Bootery. Now, Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir. Recommended change to the policy has to do with backpacks. Change to policy is as follows. To delete the requirements for mesh backpacks and replace it with backpacks, must be school-appropriate and must not contain offensive derogatory or explicit graphic symbols or writing, noise-making in light of, backpacks are also prohibited. This was after the result of many months of conversations with parents who complained that backpacks don't hold up a whole year, principals who complained that backpacks don't hold up a whole year, pencils, ink pens, lead pens stick out of the mesh backpacks and puncture holes in both our school bus seats and unfortunately sometimes other children. So the mesh backpacks have been put in place for obvious reasons to ensure student safety. But having been a principal at a middle school and a high school, we put so much stuff into the bag that the contents of the bag defeat the purpose of a mesh school bag. Our recommendation is to remove the mesh requirement because it will give families an opportunity to have a bag that lasts much longer than the mesh bag.
Any public comment? Any board discussion?
Mr. Martin also mentioned that the SROs in the sheriff's department is supportive of this.
Ms. Fertitta.
I have two comments. I've heard some positive things, because now that the students are carrying their tablets in there, that gives them a little bit more protection, especially from the rain. But the only thing that I've heard that was negative was that parents have already gone out and purchased some regular backpacks, so we know that they can go ahead and use the mesh bags if they've already purchased those. But I just wish that we would have addressed this much earlier in the year to give everybody the opportunity, because the parents start shopping for school supplies in May and June. So that was the negative thing that I heard from parents. And we also have to remember that a lot of our vendors out there have multiple types of mesh bags out there, our local people, so apologize for them having that in stock, but some of the parents will go ahead and buy the minimum.
I want to make some amends to that if the parents have already purchased those mesh bags versus the bags we're adopting tonight, Posquaw's if they can't afford it or whatever, we'll work something out on that.
Yes, as always, schools are always very open to work with families that need that, but also as a reminder, the mesh bags are still able to be used for the next few years. If that's what the family bought and it's good for five more years, use it for five more years. This just opens the door to having a non-mesh bag. And if it were me and my children, I already want the mesh bag, you're going to use that mesh bag when it wears out, I'll go buy a non-mesh bag, but each family can then make that up.
Just make sure that's clear to the parents, because there may be assumptions, have to really free that in for the bag that we're employed with, so we'll be in this understanding.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Plazoff.
Vice President, I was a student when this actually became reality. Yeah, back to twenty-five, eight years ago, thirty, something like that, but anyway. Back then, you could not bring another bag. You had your mesh bag, and if you couldn't bring it in the mesh bag, you could not bring anything else, period. No duffel bag, no anything. And there was a reason why. If you remember back in about nineteen ninety-five or '96 in Pearl, Mississippi, that was the first school shooting. That's when it all happened, when you had Columbine. That's the reason why I went to this. My only fear with this is that if you open up, you can't work. And if something happens, that's all I'm going to say. But I think what we got right now is a relaxed version of what we originally started with. You could bring a duffel bag, you could have your bag. Back then, I mean, we had to bring football equipment in a mesh bag. But we did. That's just the reality of where we are. I really don't have a say-so either way. I really, it doesn't really bother me. Only part that bothers me is giving someone a little bit more of an opportunity. That's the only thing that really bothers me. I don't like the chance of it.
Mr. Bernard.
This is almost like putting a Band-Aid on broken bones, mesh bags. I think what we have to do is address the reasons that transparency bags are put in place in the first place, and your five-year strategic plan does do that. Now, on the other side of the coin, I was in the central office when mesh bags were first introduced. That was done by Superintendent Eddie Blanch. His rationale, and he heard all the things that we're talking about, his rationale was that if he gets home with one student, reconsidering bringing any dangerous weapon that's worth it. But I go back again to what I just said. Band-Aid, and pick the broken bone, what we have to do is address the reasons why we needed it in the first place. I think the plan does do that. And if all of our administrators feel that it's appropriate to do so, they have enough on their plate right now, and I think it's time that we do impact this.
Boujwa.
Yes, and that's kind of how I reconcile it in my mind, too, Mr. Bernard. We have done so many things since this was first enacted to keep our students safe, that it is okay now to have a non-mesh bag, because we have other things in place that help with that Band-Aid. So that's kind of how I reconcile it in my mind.
I thought the principal that said that really the mesh bags, if a student wants to bring something in, they're going to get it in, because they picked up drugs, they picked up knives that students put between. they're going to get it in because they picked up drugs, they picked up knives that students put between books and, you know. So it really is defeating the purpose because if they have, if there's a will that they want to bring something, they're going to get it in.
Any other board discussion? Since the none, we'll go ahead and vote. Motion carries. Item four, academics, A. To consider approving the Achieve 3000 proposal for a three-year web-based literacy program in the amount of $1,000,055,061. Do I have a motion? Ms. Fertitta, Ms. Boujoua? Ms. Jones?
Achieve 3000 is the only company that responded to our, and this is a three-year contract. And we utilize this program for our early reading services, which would be all due to the district. The price is around $30 per student. But it allows our children to be able to read on their grade level and have the same content and answer questions. And we also do it of a Excel set. So we're going to also utilize that in middle schools that it will have a benchmarking for our children to see exactly where they're reading from.
Any public comment? Any board discussion? Ms. Boujoua?
No, does not. Some schools have elected to do four men and because we do this contract for the 3000, they give us.
Mr. Bootery?
Has this been budgeted? Is this within our budget?
Any other discussion? All right, since the none, we'll vote. Motion carries. B, to consider renewing a digital software, one-year license agreement with Renaissance Learning for a total of $73,109.20 and take appropriate action. Do I have a motion? Ms. Bell, Mr. Blazons, Ms. Anka-Law?
So Renaissance Learning is a software that provides accelerated reader and math to our students in both elementary and middle schools as well as progress monitoring tools. So we're just asking to renew this software.
Any public discussion? Any board discussion? Since the none, we'll vote. Motion carries. C, to consider approving the 2021, 2022 K through third literacy initiative plan. Do I have a motion? Ms. Schaber, Mr. Swesch? Ms. Anka-Law?
So the K3 literacy initiative, I think uploaded for you, is a short presentation outlining this initiative. The first slide reviews, I don't know who's going to be pulling up. The first slide reviews recent legislation that has been passed. There's three acts in regards to literacy. So you have Act 108, which requires early literacy training for K3 teachers as well as principals and assistant principals. Act 438 requires training around the science of reading, school literacy plans, and annual literacy reporting by school districts to the state department. And Act 419 requires reporting of students identified as having dyslexia. So the next slide is our response to this recent legislation. So our mission is to develop and implement, monitor, and sustain a literacy initiative utilizing tier-one curriculum. We have that in place already with CKLA. It is aligned to the science of reading, which is stated in the law, as well as providing literacy professional development, both to those K3 teachers as stated in the law, as well as our administrators, and also providing an early literacy assessment because we do have to report that data to ensure that our youngest readers are reading on track. So in La Fouch, we have CKLA. We are also partnering with AIM Institute for Learning and Research to provide that professional development that is required. And we are implementing the DIBELS A literacy assessment. So along with this mission, we have goals that we're going to track this year. We have a student-focused goal that students will read on grade level or show adequate progress by the end of the school year. We have a teacher-focused goal that 100% of students, yes, 100% of students meet their individualized growth goal on the literacy benchmarks. And we have a program-focused goal to improve overall reading proficiency for K3 students as measured by that DIBELS A assessment. The next slide, the last slide, reflects the budget. So this is a three-year layout right now. So year one would be the school year that we are entering, '21, '22 school year. So right now, it's going to have a price tag of $24,000 for our curriculum coaches to go through the professional development required through the AIM Institute for Learning and Research. That is all rooted in the science of reading. So they're going to learn how to teach children how to learn how to read. Year two, we bring onboard the administrators. And so that price tag goes up a bit at $76,000. Is that $76,500? Yeah. And then year three, it's a different PD. It's structured literacy. So they're going to go from proficient reading, professional development, to literacy leadership, professional development, to structured literacy. It's a more in-depth PD opportunity, and that price tag is at $52,500. So you're looking at a total investment of $153,000 for curriculum coaches and teachers to go through this PD to implement this literacy initiative. So we recommend approval for the initiative.
Thank you, Ms. Anka-Law. Any public comment?
Steve Wilson, I've got my card right here filled out with that odd number on there. Only question for that, I got a couple of questions for it. One is, the La Fouch Parish created this, your staff?
Yes, excuse me, I need to collect your card first, please. Wilson, thank you.
Sure, no problem.
You call in your name first and then you do the presentation. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Steve V. Wilson? Please state your address.
3241 Highway 308, Racine, Louisiana.
Thank you, sir.
Did, is La Fouch Parish created this program or y'all ones that are...
So, so sir, let me just be clear. So you have an opportunity to make a comment. You don't necessarily have an opportunity to ask a question.
Ask a question.
Yes.
So I cannot make my...
You can make a comment.
Okay, well, that's kind of, my comment is if the La Fouch Parish kindergarten teachers, through third-grade teachers, didn't have an opportunity to review this or have input into it, I have some concern though. Because I want, I think everybody ought to be involved in the creation of these kind of programs, especially the teachers that are going to be taking part in it. The second thing is that it's not really, it's kind of hard. And I graduated to the La Fouch Parish schools in '76. It's kind of hard for me to understand why we have to teach teachers how to teach children how to read. It seemed like through the time that education had started that it would have, reading would have been at the top of your level as far as teaching how people how to read. And that's following, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other public comment? Any board discussion? Ms. Fertitta?
I just want to say that I'm excited to see this because we know that those first three years of students in school is the most important time and we miss, so many of our children come to school with no background in reading whatsoever. And so I think it's exciting that we're doing this and some of the pieces we've done for a very long time, like DIBELS. But I just think that it's, this is way back in the days of Cecil P. Cord and he put, you know, the interest of early learning and early learning and reading because we know that those children are doomed for, not for success if they don't know how to read by the time they leave third grade. So this is very, very exciting and thank you, Ms. Anka-Law, and your group that worked so hard on this.
Mr. Bootery?
I'm probably as new at this or have as many questions as maybe Mr. Wilson does. But could one of the professionals explain to Mr. Wilson and to us in the public the concept of teaching a teacher how to teach?
Mr. Martin? I'm the son of a reading teacher. And so my mom used to talk to me about teaching children to read all the time. And I used to wonder, well, gosh, how come, mom, it really can't be that hard, right? I mean, you know how to read. You just give that skill and I'll see Ms. Boujoua about to pass that one. The science of reading has evolved over many, many years. And so what our teachers are going to get exposed to are these cutting-edge practices that get to the very heart of the most effective teaching practices available today. So I think that there's a lot of folks that would be able to teach someone how to read, but arriving in the most effective way, getting the most out of our children and our teachers is what we're attempting to arrive at. We've been teaching children how to read for quite a long time, so why invest money in this program? Because in the state of Louisiana, less than half of third graders are reading at the mastery level. And what we're attempting to do is elevate that to a much higher number. So we're very proud of the fact that we are in a much better place in 2021 than we probably were in 1991 and certainly in 1971. But we have to continue in that march to improve our practices to make sure that the students master the content that we're presenting in front of them because the standards in third grade are higher this year than they were last. And they'll continue to do that because their expectations go up. Their expectations of educators go up, and that's what this is about. Building a more capable workforce to keep our students and provide our students with the best opportunities possible.
And the way a teacher was taught to teach a child to read 20 years ago may not be the most effective way today. Remove the word "may".
Is not. It is not. It is not. There's a specific science that we're going to learn about and become experts in that's going to be much to the benefit of our children. Thank you.
Ms. Boujoua?
In my expertise as being a principal of teachers in a school, the more knowledge a teacher has about her content, the more she can bring out of her students. For them understanding the science behind how to read is going to gain the knowledge that they need. And if you're, if you're not learning, even as a teacher, if you're not learning, you're stagnant so your students are not growing.
Absolutely.
So the more tools we can put in their toolbox to help them with that. I'm all about learning, a lifelong learner, and I'm all about PD and getting teachers to learn. So this excites me because it's going to, if you are an expertise in your field, your students just bloom. So this is, this is great.
Ms. Thomas?
And one thing I want to point out, a lot of us kids and people, we get stuck in our ways. You know, because when I first went into the community college system, I saw a lot of high school graduates that could not read. They had to take remedial reading classes. So that's telling me that somewhere along the line, this teacher wasn't ready to teach this child. And so, yes, we do have to find new ways. We have to be open to change because it's inevitable. Change is going to come. And we just have to come out of our little rocking chairs and just realize that we have to move up with the times because times have changed. Children learn different than when we were in school and than when my children were in school and my grandchildren. So it's at a different pace. So yes, we have to keep up because if we don't, this state and our children, we will be doing a disservice to them because we'll be left behind.
I just want to say that I was a reading teacher in fifth grade, in fourth, fifth, and sixth for many years and thought I did a fairly good job at it. But when I started going to the conferences on the brain research and when I started looking, when we had reading recovery and I did some of the classes, I sat through them, I realized that I had really done an injustice to the students that I taught because I didn't, I taught them the way I was taught to read. Of course, I ended up with some really good students that are, you know, doctors and lawyers and all. But when I run into them and they say, well, that's true too, but I didn't teach you English. But when I see these children and they come to me and they say, you know, someone still remember me and they'll say, oh, Ms. Fertitta, you were my reading teacher. I said, oh, I am so sorry. I wish I had known then what I've learned since then about how children read. And I do, I seriously apologize to them because I think I could have done a much better job.
Mr. Benard?
Thank you, Vice President. I think at the end of the day, I mean, if we could bring fresh ideas to the table and we wanting to have better prepared students, we have to have prepared teachers. It's just a simple philosophy. We talk about students and, of course, testing and everything else. It's the easiest way to combat against, you know, low scores, kids don't know how to read or write. My wife is a college professor and she will tell me all the time, kids cannot write. Not, not five-year-olds or eight-year-olds, 18- to 20-year-olds cannot write an essay. To combat that, we start at the bottom. Of course, teaching them how to read and write at early stages, but also focusing on our teachers and giving them, like you said, the tools in order to become a better society, produce better workers in our community, so they stay here. We have to be able to teach them. And I think a lot of things have changed since the '50s, '60s, '70s where mom or dad or whatever stayed home and they taught them how to read early on in their life. Sometimes that's not happening anymore. They're not getting to be able to learn how to read and write and do math until they go to school, which is already late. So at the end of the day, if we could produce this and give our teachers the tools they need, it's going to give the kids something they need, everyone's going to benefit. And every demographic is going to benefit, period. Doesn't matter where they're from, but they can take that tool and use it on the next level. We're only going to advance ourselves further and further and further. They have to have that early on. Thank you.
Any other board discussion? All right, since the none, we'll vote. Motion carries. B, to consider entering into a three-year program for significantly disability students and take appropriate action at a total cost of $135,492.13. Do I have a motion? Mr. Archer, Ms. Bell, Ms. Jones?
This contract would be a three-year contract with news to you, which is our curriculum for our significant individuals. for our significant disabilities students. So that would be from grade three to twelfth grade and it is their math and yellow A. And it also is coordinated with our LEAD Connect standards. And so I'm asking, making the recommendation that you approve this contract. It also saves me five percent from the total cost. And they also thrown in a new program that will help with their social emotional well.
Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I just would like to say that I am very familiar with unique reading program and can testify the program is outstanding. I have a daughter with Down syndrome and she started the unique program when she was at West and had the most fabulous teacher, Harvey Babin. And my daughter has Down syndrome with an IQ of probably in the fifties and she reads pretty much anything she can put her, puts her hand on. It gives a different mode. It gives icons, pictures, and then with the words and the way they embed it in all the different areas of academics. Mary still has all of her recipe activities, recipe books, and she's living independently now and pulls them out. And it does, it always did align with the state testing, which...
She had a good teacher.
She had every teacher of hers in LaFouche Parish fabulous. So I would highly recommend one.
Mr. Boudoir?
I'm also the parent of a special needs son. I don't know if Matthew was the benefit of that program or not.
No, he was not.
It came after Matthew, probably. But I want to just compliment Parrish on what it's done with special ed for the last, I don't know, thirty years. And without what we have done, my son would be nowhere near where you... Matthew can get on a computer and do better than I can. I can tell you that right now.
That's not hard.
That's not hard too. But and can, and just function very well with things and read and, but it's because this Parrish was at the forefront and has always been at the forefront of special education.
Mr. Plon?
Yes, sir. This definitely brings a smile to my face, warms my heart for sure. Two and a half years ago, when I got on the board, one of the number one things was to bring services to all of our kids, every one of them. And we're doing that, one by one. And I mean, this is a great thing for all our kids, for all our kids in special needs. And it definitely is.
Any other board discussion? Motion carries. E., to consider approving the 2021-2022 Return to School Plan. Do I have a motion? Mr. Bernard, Ms. Schaber, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir, thank you. What you were submitting and what you have in front of you in board docs is the return to school plan for the 21-22 school year. And it would be important for us to start by underlining the word "plan" as this is the plan as it is today, July twenty-one. We anticipate that we're going to have to shift from this plan throughout the school year and as we get word from the Department of Health that we're required to make certain changes, we will in fact make those changes as the Department of Health communicates those and as potentially the Governor's Office and Louisiana Department of Education. But what I have before you is how we are going to open the school year. And I'm going to point out what I think are some important things rather than read the entire document to you. And I think the first thing that's important to point out is the Centers for Disease Control begins their guidelines and directions for schools with this concept, which I agree with, which is that the priority is to keep our schools open and in-person as many students as possible for the entire school year. And so we set that as our objective and everything that we have built into this plan is with that in mind, to keep in-person learning our focus and to make that possible throughout the school year. We want to give students as complete a school year, a school experience as possible. This is going to ensure that we take the appropriate safety measures to make sure that we're not making the community worse off than it is, but at the same time, give students the opportunity to experience things like dances, football games, basketball games, and all of the things that we think about when we think about school. However, today, five thousand three hundred new COVID cases in the state of Louisiana. So I can't present this plan without also presenting the reality of where we are as a state. And so we're very optimistic we're going to get this done and we have a plan to do that, but we have to be realistic and responsible at the same time. So what we've done is we've got some mask guidance and that mask guidance echoes the Centers for Disease Control and the Louisiana Department of Health, which is that the recommendation is that all non-vaccinated persons, particularly while indoors, wear a mask. And that non-vaccinated persons need not wear a mask. And that recommendation is going to stand and it's going to be posted in a very prominent way on all of our campuses. The places where we're going to be mandated to wear masks are on our school buses. So we cannot make the wearing of a mask optional on the school bus because of federal guidelines that have been placed as it relates to public transportation and school buses are a part of that public transportation. So everyone on a school bus, as of today, will in fact have to wear a mask. Other important things to note in the plan have to do with the contact tracing and the response to COVID. Our plan for next school year has not changed from last school year. The contact tracing, which is when someone presents with a positive case, what you have to do to arrive at who was in close contact with that person has not changed. We have to identify who the positive person was, then we have to identify who is a close contact. And if you are in fact a close contact that is not vaccinated, you have to quarantine for a set prescribed period of time, which is seven days and then ten days. But you're in that fourteen-day window where you have to monitor your symptoms. After a lengthy conversation with the Department of Health, we also arrived at some mask recommendations and guidelines that are going to impact that quarantining period as well. Most notably, if you are vaccinated and you are identified as a close contact, we do not have to leave and quarantine, but the expectation is that you will in fact mask for the fourteen-day period while you are still at risk of developing a virus because of your close contact. Unvaccinated persons will have to quarantine for a period of seven days if you test negative on the fifth day or ten days if you do not get tested. But in that window between the tenth day and the fourteenth day, when the employee and/or student is allowed to return to the school, because it's not a universally masked setting and it's a strong recommendation, the Department of Health was adamant that those persons, due to their contact, will be required to wear a mask when they're in that window, still being potentially COVID-positive or about to manifest a COVID-positive case. So that is our quarantine guidelines that are outlined in the return to school plan. It is extraordinarily similar to our guidelines that we followed last year and helped us to keep our schools open for the most part throughout the school year. We're going to have to keep a very close eye on community spread and keep a very active relationship with Dr. Chip Riggins, who's been a phenomenal help and partner through this process to develop these plans, as well as the Louisiana Department of Education, who has a close relationship with Dr. Finger at the Children's Hospital in New Orleans. He's been guiding them, they guide us, and then we work with Dr. Riggins to arrive at a plan that makes sense for LaFouche Parish based on his understanding of community spread and what makes sense for us. I would say that the school day for children in this upcoming year is going to look more like a normal school day, as is our goal. When children arrive at school, they won't be hurried into a classroom with only that group of children and this allows our teachers to not have to all arrive at work forty-five minutes early to receive those children. We're going to go back to having particularly outdoor recesses because outside, we're being told by the folks in the Health Department, you can have a nearly normal recess outside as long as you keep the children from clustering in small groups and dismissal is going to look a little bit more like a normal day as well. And then last feeding operations, we'll be able to leave some of our classrooms, go into the cafeteria and have a more normal feeding session, but we're going to definitely try and maintain those social distances because many of our families, even in the summer program when we didn't mandate universal mask wearing, sent their children to school with masks. And in the cafeteria setting, they're going to have to take off those masks. And so we want to give particularly those families that have concerns about the virus the availability to have their children eat in an environment where they're not clustered on top of one another for obvious reasons, both family concerns and our concerns, that we have an outbreak that prevents the very thing we're trying to accomplish, which is in-person learning for every student five days a week. And I'll close with our plan for extracurricular activities, which is re-normal. We're going to attempt to do everything from football games at capacity, basketball games at capacity. We're going to encourage our high schools to do their pep rallies outside because putting the entire student body in the gym at one time for an extended period of time just doesn't make sense. We'll do those things outside, but we're going to try to give both parents and students a more complete school year, complete with award ceremonies and the like. So that is the plan. Based on the amount of community spread today, I think it's a bold plan and I'm very hopeful that we can implement that plan and not go to a more restricted environment.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. So we did receive a public comment card specific to COVID and mask mandate. Ms. Shannon, I'm going to apologize. I'll let you pronounce your last name and state address.
It's scarier than it looks scary to me. You're a bitch.
Thank you.
I was in Ellender, probably more familiar with that. But I have to tell you, I've never been to one of these meetings and I'm so excited because I'm a writing teacher and I've been teaching for sixteen years. And so I'm one of the ones that tries to get those kids to be able to write by the time your wife gets them. And when we're talking about K-three literacy, I've got a first grader, a third grader, and I'm taught the younger kids and love teaching. So I'm so glad to be here. I'll probably be here every month now. So I'm like, yeah, everything you say, I'm like, I want to say that. I want to talk about this too. I'll pull up a chair. I mean, really, I'm thinking that, but now we'll talk about what... So I've come to you as a parent and also as a teacher. I saw this, I don't know what I'm doing here, really. Like I just know that we should get involved as parents when it comes to something this important. And I saw students come to school this past year who, you know, they wear the same sweatshirt all year long that they never wash, but they're too embarrassed to not wear a sweatshirt to school. You know they're not washing their masks, you know? They're sick. They... There are some things we know, but there's a lot that we don't know yet. And one of the things we don't know is what the repercussions are going to be from wearing these masks all day long and we're putting them on eight-year-olds, you know, all day long. And so as a teacher and trying to... Everything from me being able to communicate with my students and seeing if they have a question, if they're getting it, if they're not getting it, if they're, you can't see all that when half their face is covered, when the evidence is showing that kids just in general are not getting as affected by this as adults are, you know? And so John Tuckins did a study and they showed that there was zero percent deaths, zero percent, that in children seventeen and younger who didn't already have serious health conditions, zero deaths. So I just wanted to bring that to your, just kind of to put at the forefront. As a teacher and as a parent, I'm very, very concerned about this. Of course, we have to be concerned with COVID, but like it's been said, you know, that, what is it, the solution can't be worse than the problem when it comes to our children and how it's affecting them and what this is doing and we just don't know what it's doing to them. And I just want us to keep that in mind too. I know that there's a lot you have to, that you have to abide by with the CDC guidelines and all of that, but just for what you can do, just as a person who's still in the system, I just see so much negative, so much more negative than what is really the risk to them from what we've seen as presented to us this past year, you know, in real hardcore studies and actual people.
Yeah, I just want to magnify the same thing she said, that I think that it seems to me like we're just doing whatever the state, federal government does and rubber stamping and nobody's saying, hey, man, can we, give me some more information? Is it, I'm just concerned that now Texas and Mississippi can do things completely different than Louisiana.
Just kind of bothers you, Ma. Thank you. Any board discussion? I'm sorry?
Is it okay if I say one more thing?
Yeah, I'll give you one more opportunity, briefly.
No, I don't. I have, well, you know, said we couldn't ask questions, but I'll just throw this out there. I know we talked about the quarantining and with whether students are vaccinated or not vaccinated and whether they can be at school or not. And so I'm just kind of questioning where HIPAA comes in with that, with whether or not a child was vaccinated. So let's just say, let's just say hypothetically in my family, we've had it and didn't get vaccines, but now we think we have antibodies, let's just say. So if they weren't vaccinated, but someone near them had, you know, did have COVID, how are we going to know that they, that, you know, are we just going by the honor system that the kid says, well, I've been vaccinated, I can be back at school? You know what I'm saying? I don't know. Okay.
Martin?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked the question actually because it's something that I think we need to explain. The way that we're going to address this is if a child or an employee is identified as a close contact, we're going to make the assumption that they're not vaccinated and say, hey, we're going to recommend you quarantine for this amount of time and then you come back unless you can provide us evidence that you are vaccinated. And so it would be the person's opportunity to give us that at that moment if they want to avoid the quarantining protocols associated with a non-vaccinated person.
All right, time for board discussion. Yes, Ms. Martin?
Okay. The mask policy that we're asked to adopt is that fully vaccinated staff and students do not have the mask. And it's recommended for those who are not vaccinated. Now, all children under twelve are not, they cannot take the vaccine at present. So when we say recommended, are we going to enforce if a child is not wearing a mask? What are we going to do? Nothing? Okay. It's their option, correct?
It's strongly recommended. Let's say riding a bus, correct?
It's not a bus.
Mr. Plon?
I guess clarify one thing. I think we've had this conversation. If you have been vaccinated and have the COVID, it's not a HIPAA violation if he asks for it. It's not. I wouldn't say presented to me, but if he, if the school would ask for it, I think you could actually do it to have confirmation, but I think you could explain that a little bit better.
Sure, Ms. Martin. Schools have been receiving vaccination information on children for decades now. That is not new. How you arrive at that information and protecting that information... How you arrive at that information and protecting that information is what the HIPAA guidelines are about. Arriving at the information is not a violation.
Ms. Schaber?
I am a HIPAA lady.
Yeah.
That's what I do in my normal... The guidelines were relaxed when HIPAA came along as far as results in testing because it's for the benefit of the public. You know, it's more important for people to know. It's more of like if I test positive, you know, then we've been together. I mean, you should know. I shouldn't say, oh, well, you know, that's my personal. So it's...
Ms. Fratita, Ms. Fratita?
Yeah, I just want to know how we're going to get this into the hands of the parents. I know we're going to post it on the different Facebook pages and all that, but I really think it's important that parents understand this. What are your plans for that, other than posting it, you know?
Be obvious. Thank you. We're going to put it on our webpage. We're going to post it to Facebook. We're going to have some literature that we send home at the start of school so that everybody understands and has a clear idea of what we're going to do and how we're going to respond. We actually have a decision matrix that illustrates what happens and when that the Department of Health published, and it shows you very clearly where you fall on this, you know? If you're in close contact, it's basically a bunch of PFTN statements that we can make available to folks to see where they fall on that.
Yeah, I think it's really important.
Morton?
Yes, reference to Ms. Fratita's comment as well, the newspapers as well. Some billboards are electronically designed, perhaps creating some quick messages could be on those signs as a public gesture, you know? Don't forget, don't use masks. It works so as a catcher, you know, in the north, everyone found their quarter.
But, no, Morton?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain, and hopefully we don't have any concerns about this. I talked to Dr. Morton about it earlier. One of the nonprofit facilities of which I'm a member of as well, an employee at that particular site was exposed to COVID-19 by another employee while working, lost days of employment, and at that point claimed workman's compensation. And in fact, workman's comp, before it went to a judge, workman's comp did pay the amount of the suit. So my concern is, do we have a concern as far as workman's comp is concerned with any employees not wearing a mask and an employee contacting or contracting COVID-19? Is there a concern? And has Pat Emanee been in your historical work on?
I had Mr. Emanee review our return to school plan last week. He and I and Mr. Will met yesterday, and we reviewed the plan. His advice to us is that we follow the recommendations of the Department of Health, keep the plan, and make decisions in concert with Dr. Riggins, and that we should be open.
Thank you. I mean, I guess people really need to understand that public this is a fluid document. I mean, this could change in a month or three weeks from now or tomorrow. As you said before, I mean, the numbers continue to increase, and people who are vaccinated are testing positive with a different variant. I mean, these things are going to be fluid. So I think there's going to have to be a little give and take, but I mean, their guidelines, they're going to be their guidelines, and I mean, we're going to have to follow what they want us to do. And then hopefully we could, you know, get past this and move forward. I mean, it's going to be what it is. Thank you.
Any other board discussion? Since none, we'll vote. Item five, finance. A, to consider adoption of the 2021-2022 salary schedule and take appropriate action. Do I have a motion? Ms. Schaber, Mr. Benard, Ms. Email.
Good evening. A copy of the proposed 2021-22 salary schedule is attached to the meeting agenda for your review. Board members should have received a recap of the changes that were made in the schedule. All of the notable changes were previously approved by the board. Most notable changes are the provision of the stepping piece for 2021 and 2020, 2020 and 2021 for all employees, restoration of the step increases for 2016, 17, and 18 as appropriate for each employee, addition of $800 on each step of the teacher and teacher's schedule, the PAC schedule, and ROTC schedule, and the addition of $400 to all the support employee schedules representing the state pay increase. The board's previously approved changes to the music program have been included, as well as several previously approved positions, many of which are SFRM'd, and part-time pay rates have been added where they were not added before. I'm asking for your consideration and approval of all salary schedules with the effective date of July 1, 2021.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
Just a comment. It's just a... We have fresh air to be able to do this for our employees. Such good news, so we're happy for them.
Any other discussion? Since none, we will vote. B, to consider authorizing President Babin and Superintendent Martin to sign the 2021-2022 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire by adopting the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire Resolution and to submit a copy of the questionnaire to report CPAs and business advisors to board's independent auditor. Do I have a motion? Mr. Bootery, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Email.
Compliance questionnaire is required by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor and represents the district's assurance that it is following described laws and regulations pertaining to the school district financial management. Questionnaire is utilized by our external auditors during the audit process to verify our compliance. The questionnaire covers fiscal year 2020 to 2021, for the dates of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. With your approval and adoption of the resolution, the questionnaire will be provided to report CPAs and business advisors to district's external auditor.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Since none, we will vote. C, to consider approving the job description for the part-time pandemic response clerk and take appropriate action. And I have a motion. Ms. Fratita, Mr. Archer?
Mr. Morton? Yes, sir. This job description is a direct result of the tremendous workload that's been placed on our schools' front offices. Many of our elementary schools have one clerical position, and what has happened as a result of the pandemic is that you have an increased amount of work that falls on the front office to manage isolation rooms, parent contact, temperature checks, symptom checks, learning what day, and then communicating the day the children can return to school, a host of managerial duties that are happening in the front office that then fail to the principal and other folks on the school to assist the clerical staff to pull this thing off. When you pull instructional people to begin doing managerial duties, the efficacy of the classroom begins to get eroded. And so what this part-time position is about is supporting the office in all things pandemic-related activities, four hours a day, five days a week, and a part-time status at all of our elementary schools.
Any public comment?
That's Bill, I'll call him. But I know that FEMA's got a lot of money available for that, and if you cannot, you need to speak to someone with FEMA to say, real FEMA again to the pandemic and the COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. Wilton. Any board discussion? Ms. Fratita first.
Is this one for every school or is this one for the parish?
This is one for every school, Ms. Fratita, specifically the elementary schools. And it is through our SFRM money that we received as a result of the CARES Act and the pandemic. This is a two-year plan to get us through the pandemic.
Great idea.
Bootery?
That's the FEMA money. And looking at the job description, I don't know. This person's only going to work for all of us.
Any other board discussion? Since none, we will vote. D, to consider approving the federal program consolidated super application, migrant education, McKinney-Vento, Indian education, and early childhood cohort three application and budgets for the 2021-2022 school year. And I have get a motion. Boujua, Ms. Bell, Ms. Ankala.
The document attached to this agenda item lists program specifics for the federal grants as well as a budget comparison chart. So the budget comparison chart is the last page of the document. On this chart, you're going to see the difference of operational award amounts for the federal grants. You'll notice that Title I, we had a cut of about $73,000, as well as migrant education. We had a cut of about $26,000, and Indian Ed about $10,000. We ask for your consideration in approving the federal programs and budget.
Any public comment? Any board discussion?
So this is picked up by the federal grant?
Yes, sir.
Any other board discussion? Since none, we will vote. E, to consider approving special education service provider contracts or contract renewals for IDEA and general fund as appropriate to ensure FAPE for all students. And I get a motion. Mr. Bootery and Mr. Archer, Ms. Jones.
Most of this is contained in my budget, which goes through an extensive approval process, and there's certain things that I have to spend that money on, like professional development, supplies, materials, equipment. And I will write contracts for over $20,000. Board policy says that you have to approve that. But for me, I have to address my students immediately. And so our process of going to committee and then waiting for a board meeting could delay that process by two to three months. And so we're asking permission that you would allow me to be able to utilize my grant money and have those supply materials, special development, or any contract that might come up. One that happens to us a lot recently is we have a high population of students that are deaf and have to have a fine language interpreter. I can't wait three months for that. That is our only means of communication. So that's the part that is in general fund that we had to contract with to supply that. And we do that virtually. So that helped us tremendously because we just don't have in-person.
Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I just, I hate to keep doing this, but I just want to say our IDEA and also Title I and all those other programs, the hard work that it is to put this together. I mean, it's... When you look at all the different programs that come under there and the students that they serve, I just want to give them some accolades and kudos. Your job well done.
Any other board discussion? Since none, we will vote. She can put her in. And the motion carries. Item six, land in facilities. A, to consider a change order to add eight additional days to the contract due to inclement weather during the month of June 2021 for the new Tibbetts Middle School project and take appropriate action. And I get a motion. Mr. DePlantis and Mr. Swess. Mr. Heaven, play don't.
Good evening. Eight days are in order with the inclement weather for the project. So the recommended action would be to accept the change order to add eight additional days to the contract due to inclement weather during the month of June 2021 for the new Tibbetts Middle School project.
Any public comment? Any board discussion? Mr. Bootery?
Evan, what was the effective date of the contract?
You caught me off guard on the whole one.
Well, my question only pertains to the eight days maybe...
June 21st.
The eight days are the whole month of June because it rained every day.
And this next coming month's going to be even worse.
Any other board discussion? Ms. Service Playdon?
It's going to be way worse, way worse. We might do this 30 times in this project. Might go into the next board. I don't know. But I mean, the month of July.
Two days.
Maybe a couple of days ahead, and at that point, it was too wet to do anything anyway. So it's been amazing, and I'm sure the next one as well is going to go past the 14 days as well. But anyway, thank you, sir.
Any other board discussion? All right, since none, we will vote. B, to consider a change order to add 14 additional days to the contract due to inclement weather for the month of June 2021 for the Saint La Rose Cafeteria Edition Project and take appropriate action. Ms. Fratita, motion, and Mr. Bootery, second. Mr. He play don't.
Same again. The days are in order. So the recommended action would be to accept the change order to add 14 additional days to the contract due to inclement weather for the month of June 2021 for the Saint La Rose Cafeteria Edition Project.
Any public discussion? Public comments? Any board discussion? Mr. Bruno?
Being a resident of the 10th floor, I can tell you, it rains in the morning, and when it doesn't, it rains in the evening. If I can't play golf, I guarantee you the employees can't do their job. For sure. And I would definitely approve it. I've driven around those sites maybe once or twice every other week, and it's horrible conditions. This is definitely...
Any other board discussion?
I pass them in weekly. And the position they're in is like the worst possible position. The building is there. Cleaned. I saw it pressure washed the other day, which was like the water didn't. But they're trying to grade out the land, and it's not happening. I mean, you have concrete to pour. It's just in a very, very bad place. I mean, it's pretty sloppy out there. The site was very clean. It went from looking very nice when it was dry eight weeks ago to it's going to be... to it's, it's going to be a ruffle. My only question would be is actually, so we had a day of August weather open, where are we anticipating in September to be finished or?
Yeah, we're, we're somewhere in September right now with the additional fourteen days, and just don't know where it's going that way right now. I'm excited to see that.
Any other board discussion? Since none, we'll vote. E to consider a credit change order for unused allowance to include five thousand dollars in hardware allowance, ten thousand dollars in telecommunications unit utility connection allowance, five thousand dollars in water utility connection allowance, five thousand in gas utility connection allowance, twenty thousand for five tons of steel fabricated and placed at four thousand per ton, five thousand in caulk link fence, chain link fence allowance, and five thousand in brick masonry allowance for a grand total credit in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for the South La Rose Cafeteria Edition project and take appropriate actions. I get a motion. It's Boujwa, Mr. Plaiso, and Mr. Evan Plaiso.
And y'all all probably shaking your head, wondering what's all this about. We put, we put these allowances in our projects just for if the contractor needs more steel in there, we'll have some money in there for that chain link fence. If we decide to go even further around the building or things of that nature. So now's the time to get that money back. So, and like I say, and this is always a happy time for me, because the recommended action would be to, to accept the credit change order of unused allowances to include, but like we said, five thousand in hardware allowance, ten thousand telecommunications, five thousand in water utility connection allowance, five thousand in gas utility connection allowance, twenty thousand for five tons of steel fabrication of, and placed at four thousand dollars a ton, five thousand in chain link fencing allowances, and five thousand in brick masonry allowance for a grand total credit in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for the South La Rose Cafeteria Edition project.
Any public comment? Any board discussion? Since none, we will vote. Motion carries. Thank you. E to consider a change order in the amount of six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars to add additional flange and butterfly valves to the South La Fouch High School chiller replacement project and take appropriate action. And I get a motion. Mr. Archer and Mr. Schwes. Mr. Evan Plaiso.
These, these items are being requested by the school district or by my department ourselves. Currently, we do not know when the new chiller is going to come in. So in order to maintain our condition space of the new building, we have to put some new valves in here so we can accommodate a portable chiller if needed. So these are benefiting the school district by virtue of putting this, these items in here now, we can dump our chill water system and get it prepped for when the chiller's due to come in. So at this point, the recommended action would be to accept the change order in the amount of six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, ask further to request the La Fouch Parish School Board to add additional flanges and butterfly valves in the South La Fouch High School chiller replacement project.
Any public comment? Any board discussion? Mr. Plaiso.
I guess I'm going to say this, because most people have no idea what we're talking about.
No, no, just no.
They have no idea what a blind flange is, butterfly valve, some may know, but it just, we want to make sure we spend our money wisely. This is something that we're going to use there, we can use in a lot of other places as well. This is a temporary hookup. If we need.
This is a permanent connection.
So it's a permanent connection to this unit already.
Yes, it will be a permanent connection because of the fact that we're replacing two chillers right now today. Next year, we're going to be replacing the third chiller on that same location, but adding these, these, these Ts and these butterflies, we can isolate the system and not have to dump the entire school to replace that chiller. Does that help, sort of?
Any other board discussion? Since none, we will vote. And the carries. Motion carries. E to receive a report from Mr. Evan Plaiso, Slanting Facility Manager, on bids received for hunting and fishing privileges on the southeast quarter, SE four of section sixteen, Township fourteen south, range eighteen east, Kramer area, and take appropriate action. This is just to receive reports, so Mr. Evan? Mr. Evan Plaiso?
Yes. On July fifteen, twenty twenty-one, we opened the bids up for the, this section, sixteen property Township fourteen S, range eighteen E, the Kramer section, which is roughly about a quarter of the section, one hundred and sixty acres. We received one bid at a nine dollars and fifty-one cents per acre or a annual fee of one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-six, sixty cents annually. So the recommended act, action would be to accept the high bid in the amount of nine dollars and fifty-one cents per acre for one hundred and six acres or one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents, sixty cents annually from Mr. Gerald Matherne for hunting and fish privileges at southeast quarter or southeast slash four, section sixteen, Township fourteen south, range eighteen east, Kramer section.
All right, and can I get a motion? We actually do need one. Mr. Archer, Mr. Bootery, any public comment?
Yes, we have some public comment.
Mr. Wilson?
I have some answers.
Yeah. My comment would be, I would think that this would be a good opportunity in the future to make a reserve for the public to go use. I don't know why, I don't, you could work with some kind of agency or something, wherever you got this property and make it open to the public because there's less and less property that the citizen or in the La Fouch Parish can go out and hunt and fish. No question about it. Just something that you could look at for a thousand something dollars a year, and that's not a whole lot of revenue coming in off of that.
Any other public comment? Any board discussion?
Just as a part of information, and, and maybe a lot of people don't know, all sixteenth section lands were reserved by the state, the school districts historically from the time the state was surveyed. So the school districts own the sixteenth section lands throughout the parish. I know that we have some areas where we may have some encroachments, but that is, that's why the, the school district is able to lease that property or do it, the district feels its best at that point in time.
Any other board discussion? Since none, we will vote. F to consider hiring Robert Utley of Estegino's.
Estenau.
Estenau's Goodwin Utley for the mechanical cost analysis of twelve school sites and take appropriate action. Can I get a motion? Mr. Tita and Mr. Schwes, Mr. Plaiso.
Yes, sir. This is part of the analysis project that we're doing with Mr. Gotham Halloween Associates. So with Mr. Utley and Castenau Goodwin, other engineers going to be doing, is doing the, the mechanical and the electrical of the twelve sites. The recommended action would be to authorize hiring, hiring Robert Utley of Castenau Goodwin Utley Engineers for the mechanical cost analysis for the twelve school sites and take appropriate action.
Any public comment? Any board discussion? Mr. Benard.
I know I had asked you the cost of that, and you didn't give it to me. Would you, do you remember the cost?
Actually, I don't have the attachment, but y'all have the attachment on the board deck, so I think it was thirty-five thousand.
And for the record, I really appreciate the fact that I asked that question back to you.
You are.
Any other board discussion? Ms. Tom.
Can you tell me the twelve school sites on that list?
Oh, my goodness. Off the top of my head, can I get back with you?
Well, I can make it easy for you. Can you tell me CM Washington is on that list?
Yes, sir. It is, absolutely, CM Washington is on that list. WS The Fog is on the list, yes, man. It's the oldest, it's, it's our oldest school.
Right, okay.
Any other board discussion? All right, since none, we will vote. G to consider hiring Leonard Chovan of Leonard Chovan P E E L S Incorporated for the design and construction management of three bus yards to be located in the northern, central, and southern portions of the parish and take appropriate action. I get a motion. Mr. Plaiso, Mr. Schwes, and Mr. Plaiso.
Okay. This is to authorize us to hire Mr. Chovan's company to design the, and the bidding and the construction management of the three yards. As you said, one in the central part, the southern part, and the northern part. So the recommended action would be to authorize hiring Leonard Chovan of Leonard Chovan P E E L S Incorporated for the design and construction management of the three bus yards in the, located in the northern, central, and southern parts of portions of the parish.
Public comment? Any board discussion? I'm Mr. Bootery. What is the cost?
We have, we have budgeted about three point five million dollars for these yards. The cost is going to be, once we design the project and we put it out on the market, the engineer is, gets the state permit off of that, the bidding amount. So to give you an accurate dollar amount to that.
I understand, I know the process, I just wanted the public to be able to know.
My fault.
All right, any other board discussion? Since none, we will vote. Motion carries. H to consider declaring one portable building located at South La Rose Elementary and one portable building located at CM Washington Elementary as surplus and to authorize the sale of said buildings and take appropriate action. I get a motion. Plaiso, Mr. Benard, Mr. Evan Plaiso.
All right. Currently, we have one portable at, located at Old La Rose Upper, now LCO, South La Rose Elementary School. South La Rose Elementary School was using that building, it's no longer viable or such, and we've gone with accident, you allow us to disposition this building. Then I see a Washington same, goes through that one. The building is used as a catch-all, not really being used, principal said take it, so we're requesting for a surplus of this building as well. So the recommended action would be to authorize and declare one portable building located at South La Rose Elementary School and one portable building located at CM Washington Elementary as surplus and to authorize sale of said building.
Any public comment? Any board discussion?
Is there a responsibility, the buyer, to remove that at the site and take care of the grounds and stuff like that? How does that work?
It's the, the buyer or whoever's taking the building's responsibility to move it at their cost. As far as for the grounds, we will take care of the grounds ourselves.
Any other? Boujwa.
Just a quick question, you moving these buildings because they're at a school that's being utilized? Old Race the Lower have lots of portable buildings, are we going to surplus those or? Okay, I'm ahead of the game.
Any other board discussion? Motion carries. I to consider entering into an intergovernmental agency agreement with the La Fouch Parish Sheriff's Office and the La Fouch Parish Government to transfer possession and ownership of two surplus portable buildings to the La Fouch Parish Government and three surplus portable buildings to the La Fouch Parish Sheriff's Office and take appropriate action. I have a motion. Ms. Boujwa, Mr. Archer, and Mr. Plaiso.
All right, to get back to your question, the five buildings at the Old Race the Lower have already been, y'all already allowed us to surplus them and we advertised them. But through our advertisement, we found that we can come, enter into the intergovernmental agreement with the, with the parish government, be it the sheriff's office and the parish government, where we can surplus these buildings to them if they need them. And it'll be up to them to cover the cost of moving and transfer for them. So, Mr. Martin, you want to comment?
Absolutely. Head Start has need for more buildings, they want the buildings, which is frankly what has happened through our bidding process, and the cost of moving is doing thousands of dollars. So if we have an intergovernmental agency that, that, that we can assist by allowing them to assume ownership of that property, and they assume the responsibility of moving it to their location, it, it actually benefits this, this agency quite a lot because they are deteriorating because they're not being used. Instead, another government agency will push back if they can use these properties, and they're willing to assume the responsibility of getting it into their control and it leaves our property, again, this is a, this is going to come in a savings for this institution.
So with this said, the recommended action would be to authorize entering into an intergovernmental agency agreement with the La Fouch Parish Sheriff's Office and the La Fouch Parish Government, transfer possession of, possession and ownership of two surplus buildings and the La Fouch Parish Government and three surplus buildings to the La Fouch Parish Sheriff's Office and take appropriate action.
Any public comment? Any board discussion? And the motion carries. Item seven, adjournment. I want to go ahead and thank everyone for making today's meeting. We are so adjourned.